At this time, we reopen the ordinance committee relative to county 2016-267 relative to the land disposition agreement, parcel R1 at the Hancock Park lot. We concluded with remarks from Mr. Mr. Gary. This time, the floor is open to council for any final questions. Comments? Council?
Thank you. Again, I would just like to put it here to mark council, Mr. Shea.
Mr. Shea.
Again, one of the big concerns that I've always had, particularly why I appreciate the mayor's agreement to have in the council for these particular agreements and all that is that, again, obviously, the level of complexity in some of these things is pretty enormous. And, again, one of the things, the concerns that I've had from the beginning are always that, you know, why don't the conditions exist? With the land disposition agreement, it's very different than the last one that we had that offers certain protections in the event something goes wrong, but then also, as it clearly spell, given the fact that this particular land disposition agreement has precedent to us set up other contingencies leading to its closing that defines what we do or what we're responsible here for as a city council, to what level we're engaged in that discussion. Could you talk again about those specific issues? I know you did bring it up with the last meeting, but what the difference is in that amended land disposition agreement than we have presently?
Well, the three major points that I made on the last meeting or the meeting before was first, I wanted to be clear which step, future steps after the way this position agreement is executed, come back into the council. Some of them were not explicit, some were kind of implicit. I think it's always simpler to make it absolutely clear. And those clarifications have been made, and that is that the bond authorization for the garage has to be approved by the city council. Parking lease has to be approved by the city council. And actually, I might add, I don't know if in terms of the discussion that went on earlier, I mentioned to Mr. Gary that, you know, I think that in terms of the cost of the garage is important, but I think even if it's higher than the projection for a former, it's still shared the same, you know, 20% of the dollar or eighty percent of the city. So, I don't believe it's capped at that 35,000 space. That's just, that's good. You still want it to be a reasonable number, but that's, I think, something involved in that discussion. And the next thing was that the affirmative occupations, there'd be some security for like, for example, maintaining the park going forward, and basically, as I think Mr. Gary mentioned, that if somehow there's a failure, and that's important, of course, the maintenance of the park is almost more important than having it because if it's not working well, it's an eyesore and safety issues. But basically, that is, it's very clear that if there's a failure in maintenance that no one expects, the city can perform the maintenance and charge back the developer, and those costs will be retained, those costs will be secured by sources on the top. That is, I had a problem, I had a wall there. So, again, I think those things were addressed.
Those were some, by the way, issues that the council had raised.
Yes.
Various councils have raised these concerns about, right? The other thing that's interesting specifically that, again, in the earlier land disposition agreement, that was, I lack the proper term, kind of this wholly, totally integrated package that didn't work. This is different in the sense that, that there are these contingencies that follow the LDA that have to be completed to allow this developer to get to a closing. So, there is some risk inherent in that for the developer, right? Against, let's do a little ordinary market project. You know, the, I'm going to ask you this because, again, it goes back to the older one, but I'm not going to channel him this evening, but the late councillor Macman, if you remember, it was interesting, once we had finished the last land disposition agreement, and at the end of it all, just before we're getting ready to vote, one of the things that he said was, "Oh, Mr. Shea, Mr. Shea, now, I'm not an attorney," since how we used to introduce a lot of these, he said, "I'm not an attorney, but I want to ask you, is this a good deal for the city of Lansing?" Remember that, correct? He said, "Is this a good deal?" And what you said back at that particular point in time was, "The market will determine whether or not this is a good deal essentially." He said that we're not here necessarily to determine if it's going to be a good deal, but what's important, if you're asking me, that in the event that this doesn't work out, does this particular land disposition agreement protect the taxpayers of Quincy, then it's a very good agreement. So, I guess the question I'm asking you give in the proceedings, that's in, does this, in your opinion, does this specific land disposition agreement worth trying to protect the taxpayer in the event, for whatever reason, some of the things that the agreement conditioned on fail, in a way that we keep this in order?
Well, in parallel with the previous agreement, one, and I came in after we were early negotiating, I was concerned, one of the big concerns in my experience with insurance was the 6A thing is higher than regular taxes. And Sydney, in that deal, was kind of, was going to finance the infrastructure with, in effect, pledges of 6A things. So, I was concerned that if that, those, that, the agreement is determined, normally, you like 6A to go away because it's a break on taxes. That is a situation where the developer may order break their taxes. It could be lethal with the tax, we fix that on one another. In this one, this isn't really a master land disposition agreement, so basically, the parcel of any block lot. Here, as I mentioned on the last meeting, the time before, I want to make sure the use restrictions stay at that, because a lot of the subsidies that I would work, a lot of things is to allow, make it economical to build, but otherwise, the market will be here, that is, a high-rise steel frame construction. I wanted to make sure that things didn't work out, that somehow that could be wiped out, where as a lender could say, "Well, that didn't work, so now we've got to grow up that restriction," and make sure that stays in effect for years. So, you're not going to sit where you provide benefits to get the higher density and the higher rise of the developer.
And so, you're convinced, again, this particular agreement does protect those restrictions moving forward? Well, thank you very much, I think that's much what I, I think, you know, I, again, contrary to my behavior up here at some point in some time, I really do believe in a strong mayor model of government. And at the end of the day, specifically, it falls on the mayor and the mayor's office around negotiating this particular type of agreement. And it becomes very difficult to imagine that we could ever negotiate that wholly by, through a legislative body, per se. But what we do have is the opportunity to decide, is this a good deal or a bad deal? And what do you feel that we need that protects people moving forward? And each person, I think, has to go and vote how they feel about that. I just want to remind everyone that it's been about, you know, two years that we've talked about this, and I think specifically with Mr. Gary coming on at that particular point, in terms of even getting to the point where that URDP would allow us to do anything, a great deal of work on the part of their office and on part of this body, quite honestly, in negotiating that, and in good faith, in that process, particularly as applied to land disposition agreements, they made certain that this body would be included in that particular process, and they have kept faith with that. As far as this one particular deal goes, I mean, I could, again, I think often there might have been ways I might have done it differently, but I'm not the mayor, despite moments of grandiosity that I might have had. But the truth of the matter is, is that, that one fact we can say is that if we do nothing there, we're going to get nothing, bottom line. And so, as this particular proposal goes forward, and again, I know many of you may still have certain questions that you need to come to make your own vote, but I'm going to support it. I think that the whole premise that it's based on is simply that if we want the type of building that we want, and I think that's always been part of the core component, it's clear cut that that can't happen in the market conditions. And so, what it requires, it requires some type of agreement that is essentially incentivizing a developer who's willing to take the risks associated with moving forward with this. And I think we're right now in that particular situation, and I think that the purpose of this agreement serves us well in the sense of protecting that what we hope to achieve there is achieved. And, again, we're not ever going to get to that perfect agreement at this point, but I would want to remind people is, it's still a number of steps between now and closing time, in terms of, of even this particular project. We can't get to that, those issues are to that point in my mind without moving this forward. And so, you know, I'm at some level of confidence in knowing that only time's going to tell if it works, but knowing that we have worked on our work enough to ensure that there are things in place hopefully to protect taxpayers. Finally, I just want to say, because I hear this all the time, in relation to what they know, particularly in the last couple of weeks, the impression is though there's nothing of value coming back from the developer, or that this is somehow being represented as a giveaway. I think particularly given the market risks associated in doing this, is really truly a misrepresentation of what's going on. The last thing I, I would also say is that after the whole move away from the master developer and that concept, the whole idea has been about utilizing the public lots to attract other development. And if you remember, in those situations where we can't win, there's, you know, West of Chestnut, which I think is a fire, you know, thing that's being started to be built out in some regards, but everybody said, "Well, wood structures, that's, we don't want wood structures downtown, we want this, this particular type of building." And so, this is putting into place that very reality, and it represents in many respects, and I think this is true as an anchor, to hopefully draw additional people to commit and to invest, but hopefully on the commercial side, and I'm happy to hear that they're invading that entity, again, in relation to talking about the strategies for that. You know, and I travel, I'm not a developer, obviously, and I've never felt more above my pay scale sort of thing in terms of some of these issues, as I've noted before. But the one thing I can note is that when a person of the character and nature and the reputation of Pam specifically says, "This is a very good deal," I have to take that very seriously. I think it is, and I think she believes as well, she's represented up here, that this is, serves the very catalyst that we're trying to talk about. Hopefully, I think there's no one here who wouldn't want to see that happen. If it doesn't, and if there's problems along the way, I do believe that how this has been structured in the land disposition agreement will serve the city well. So, with that, I thank you, Madam Chairman. Again, I want to congratulate your work and then council liaise in terms of, however it goes, but in terms of the process that we laid out from here. But I also want to thank Mr. Gary, whom I'm sure, I don't know if you've been able to call in the, you know, second quarter of the Patriots game, to ask some hard question about this, and he probably would have picked up the phone and answered it. And with that, I just want to hope, I hope my colleagues will also support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Finn. He was answering my emails quite immediately prior to pick up. Councillor DeBola.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I want to concur with Councillor Finn on a lot of things he just said. I want to take a step back and have a couple of comments before I ask Mr. Gary a few questions. And I want to take a step back of last year, before stepping into office here in January, the West of Chestnut was just being built, and the structure of steel was being put in, and Councillor Macman, by rest of soul, basically handed the ball off, the football off, to say, "Here, run with it." I did a little research on West of Chestnut, it's 169 units. Right now, as we speak of today, 70% of that is rented out and leased. So, 133 units of the 169 is already leased out right now. And I called and I said, "What are you getting for different clientele then?" They say, "Well, all different varies, clientele, couples, singles, millennials, a wide variety of people coming to the city of Quincy." He also said there was people from the city of Quincy that want to live in the downtown. So, there is a need for it. On Sunday before the Patriots game, I went over to Clapham Place for the very first open house, the Galvin Brothers, the 28 units that are already built, and then there's other 20 coming in. I was over there for about an hour and a half, could not believe the amount of people that were going through there to look at these units, or one unit that they have, the model unit that they have. They already have six under agreement for the open house, so I feel with myself, there's a need, there's a need out there for these luxury condos, for the apartments. This kind of leads us into the third phase of this, which is basically Chestnut Place Steel Conno Building, which is going to be a separate entity in itself, a luxury apartment that's going to coincide right next to the West of Chestnut, in a parcel that nothing is being used right now for about maybe 40, maybe 40 parking spaces right now, that's what's going to take out. And then what goes hand in hand with that is the Hancock Lot, the garage. I always take note as to how these moving parts are moving along, and what's going on the outskirts of it, how are we setting this up? Are we doing the infrastructure improvements around the city, around the URDP, around the DIF district? And we are, because as Mr. Gary said on our last three-hour tour, on our last meeting, that the Ross Garage, the Ross Lot, has 235 parking spaces, Fox Rock Properties, which should be the major players, if and when this is approved, to take on R2 and R3, which in my personal opinion, we're looking for the commercial end of this. And those will be two parcels that you'll see a significant amount of commercial space, not to mention what's going on right now, since the weather's so good out there, is behind the courthouse, Galvin Drive, which is the Galvin Brothers, also half a parcel over there, that they're working on straight commercial real estate. Because of weather's so good, they've been able to get a foot in the ground over there, and if you drive by it, you'll see that it's being built. So, things are in motion around the district that coincide with this. I always think about the law of physics, one without the other was nothing, and this is another portion, another piece of the puzzle to keep this going. Now, as Mr. Gary said before, we had the Streetworks deal, it was put in front of us, it didn't work out, they lost about three years of time, we've been talking about it, as Councillor Finn says, for quite a while here, it's time to move forward. It's time to move forward with the downtown development and making this happen. All my life, I've lived here, and we haven't done as much as we should with the downtown. And now we get to the situation, we get to the point where we're going to make the point to do the development, and you say, "Oh, well, these are all three of the new structures that are being, that are being built, that are going to be proposed to be built," have a level of differences to it. The 169 units in West of Chestnut's different. The Galvin Brothers with the Clapham Place is condominiums, you want to buy down here, you want to rent down here, and now we're going to the next step, we're going for a luxury, luxury apartment. Another new thing that can give us profitability into the DIF district that will allow us to prosper. Also, I may note that because of these buildings being built, other restaurants are coming on board now. 16C has taken a foot before this development kind of happened and said, "We're going to place ourselves right here, right next to Alvin." The Ziff Chidid Raw Bar, which is brand new, just got opened. Inside the West of Chestnut, you've got the West of Chestnut Fuji, you also have the K-Cane's Burgers, which I've eaten, very good. You're going to look at the Cafe Gelato, which is going to go on the West of Chestnut within the next month, something you may be able to bring a family to, bring some children down to the downtown. We're talking about coffee places. We need a wide variety to cater to the people. And then I talked to a lot of people that are moving to the city of Quincy, and they're saying, "You guys are developing, I want to bring not only my wife, but I want to have a family here in the city of Quincy, because you have good schools, you have good public safety, you put money into the police and the fire. That's an attraction for me, I see the potential of the Quincy Center." And I think it's our duty as councillors to make sure we do our due diligence with making sure it's the best deal, but at the same time, moving the city forward. The ball was handed off to me last year, came into the situation with a variable, and what are you going to do about it? I always said, "We've got to get this downtown development going." And I always used to say to Madam Chairman, "We're moving too slow, can we speed this up?" And I think we're right where we need to be in the process, we're right where we need to be. The interest rates are shot and declined, and the developer wants to get on and move on and move the city forward. These aren't people from the outside. These people live in the city, they grew up here, just like myself, and they want to invest into something that they also live in. They aren't investors from way outside or developers from way outside, these are people that grew up in the city of Quincy that want to invest into this city, the right development. And I look at it that way, that's an important value to me. They live here too, that they invested into the city, they want to make sure that these are the right structures that are going into the city, that they want to continue to live in, race families. I just think that we've heard a lot of good thanks tonight, we've got a lot of the due diligence of the work that you've done. It's going to lead me into my two questions that I have, Mr. Gary or anybody else that can answer this. I want to talk a little bit about the parking garage that coincides with this. Now, we're supposed to be 650 to 700 parking spots, we currently have 500 parking spots. And we've talked a little bit about this, I didn't know if you could tailor up on this, how many parking spots do you need for 124 units? And is that going to be structurally built so where all of those residents will park in that parking lot?
The, what the Chestnut Place project calls for, 126 parking spaces, it's a 124 unit building. The parking spaces for that building will be underground and adjacent to it.
Okay. The 126, does that add to the 650 or 700, or is that part of that?
Right now, it's part of it. You may recall, we did have the discussion last time, and we talked about a range of 600, 650, or 700. And part of the review that is underway is made in determination based upon the factors that I cited, as to what is, what will work best. And it's anticipated that the parking garage on the Hancock Lot side, in addition to the wide, as I mentioned in prior testimony, will have a public space attributed to it, so that we're welcoming people into that space, it doesn't become a dark space next to a garage. We all live through Ross Garage experience, and as councillors have brought up, mentioned before, that's kind of problem municipal garages around the country, you know, not just here in Massachusetts or the city of Quincy. So, we think it's important to invigorate that area, to enliven it, to bring people as a destination, and we believe that that's going to enhance that, the developments that you just talked about. I had it mentioned to the Councillor Yang last Thursday night, I was working late here, and I was quite tired, and I, you know, decided that it was time to go grab a bite to eat at Alvin's, which I did. I went into the new place, it was great, and I decided to get a little fresh air in there, since it was a pleasant night, on a Thursday night, I walked up Hancock Street, and I looked at all the Alvin's on both sides, the new place and the traditional place back. I went by the hamburger place, K-Cane's, and it was filled, and something struck me, it was filled with young families and children, and there were children, and this was like 815 or something. And I went by Fuji, every single seat, every single table was painted blue. And so, I decided to cut through the Alvo of West of Chestnut to check out the Fat Cat likewise. Then I went around the corner to 16C likewise, and I got a free parking space for the old Ross on the sidewalk, he hunted through the alley over there. And so, I peeked in at I Inferno, and that place was packed as well. So, everything we're attempting to accomplish here is to do just what you said, is to energize this area, make it a destination. It's, it's, I think, a wonderful step forward in development that is going to occur is in anticipation, that type of development, it's in anticipation of there being a garage, of there being more residents, more commercial activity, and particularly more commercial activity. And I think many of them see that as a positive prospect, and that's what's going to bring more people in and help us reinforce commercial types of activities that we're trying to encourage here in the downtown. You might also mention this project, Mr. O'Conne committed himself to making this a new job, of course, it's high-rise steel construction, so it's a practical matter, it has to be union work. But also, the law that was enacted that allows the city to designate redevelopment to undertake some of these public works, that law requires that all of those projects be prevailing wage. So, you will see that type of economic benefit coming to the construction workers of our city and nearby communities.
You answered my second question, I was going to say, how do you predict our first season, talk a little bit on prevailing wage, which you elaborated on. to talk a little bit on prevailing wage, which you elaborated on. I'm very optimistic that this is gonna work out and the city forward. I've been waiting for this for a long time. We all have. And thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
I'm looking forward, I'm looking forward to the two parcels, R2 and R3. The commercial real estate that we strapped to need, that Fox Rocks maybe will be the player in this, as well as the hospital and the medical use. But as you see, the pieces of the puzzle kinda getting together here throughout the DIF district, around the URDP, then we go up to the hospital area. It's all, it's all the pieces of the puzzle. The law of physics is all about the other stuff.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Matt. I'm gonna be in deep support of this as well.
Thank you.
Councilor Proll, please. Councilor Proll.
Thank you, Steve. It's been a long, long conversation. It's spawned itself over several meetings, I know. Mr. Casey, I've been in attendance a few minutes. I didn't, you know, he's offered an opportunity. I'll get any emails if you wanted to have. I'm ready to come to the meetings. Okay, no. Uh, please, I don't need to say anything.
My name's Arthur Casey. I work for the O'Connell companies. I like the direction this is going in. I think it's the intention of Mr. O'Connell to produce exactly what he's saying. If anyone has any questions or...
I don't. I just, you know, like I said, we've been here throughout. I wanna at least extend the opportunity to get that, to say something. So, um, thank you.
Thank you.
The Councilor Gary and Mr. Datsis, you so kind. Just to kind of recap, cuz again, I'm one of these guys who reflects this thing here. So I think what we share in the word, the word deliberation, obviously, there's always information from other discussions that I like to kind of tie up active, you know, where we started, and you know that, um, both of you have, you know, been in various roles throughout the process, both the Mayor, Council, both the administration. So we've been through several iterations of URDP. Pretty accurate, right?
Yes.
URDP, yeah, right. Essentially, URDP was, you know, the guiding set of principles, or the guiding document that, you know, in my mind, this is the way I've internalized it, set up a systematized process for downtown, which essentially had, you know, flashing light attention developers. This is what we want to, this is what we want to build. And what I was trying to dig back into the, that almost my brain figured out was, when was this, when was this set up? Was it 2005, 2006?
I'll defer to, uh, to the planning director. When the, uh, the mayor's administration started, we were visited prior to the election, uh, excuse me, prior to the inauguration in November. Uh, once the election was settled, uh, Street Works came up to meet with the mayor and myself and Mr. Walker, a few other folks. And they started to lay out their plan. So we're going back some time, obviously. But the, the concept predates us. It was the Goodie Plan C study that was run in 2006. One interesting point, the financial analyst on that Goodie Plan C plan was Pam McKinney. Pam McKinney came along again when the Red Gate people came before us to help us after Street Works departed. And then, after that plan had been presented to this council and to the mayor, we were very fortunate to be able to reach out directly to Ms. McKinney and ask her to please come to work on the Alba City of Quincy. So it has been a long time. It's been nine years. At minimum, a little longer than that. With many iterations, many conversations with this council, many different councilors, actually, over that period of time. But the one driving, you know, vision was something had to be done. Quincy Center completely changes. And, uh, so we listened to the experts, Goodie Plan C, obviously. Uh, Street Works, Street Works had a great value to the city, and it was incredible for that from a planning perspective. Uh, then finally, when the Red Gate folks came in, they were pretty straight with us. They said, "This is what we can hope for." And, uh, you know, you and I spoke before in different lots. They eventually said that if the city was interested, we should go ahead and handcuff it. Where the Ross lot was the Hyde lot, which is what we were asking Street Works to do, cuz we agreed with the handcuffing spot. Handcuff was easier. Now, the city is taking advantage of that. It's easier to develop a lot that did not have a decadent parking garage on it. So we were able to start the conversation on handcuffing, and many things happened in the middle of Ross site. So, um...
So yes, my point, and I think you kind of illustrated that in a roundabout fashion, is this district, this downtown district has always been set up for economic development. Because I think everyone agreed, it still agrees to an extent, that what we had, and I heard a lot from residents, downtown in the past wasn't all worth it. Right? There was not a, there was not an attraction. There was not a, "I wanna go to Quincy Center." You know, here's, here, uh, just have an experience, quite honestly. And I think that as we continue to progress, some of this is happening now. And there's no doubt in my mind that folks will go and check out anything that's, you know, I have a young family, right? You know, we wanna go check out something that's new, right? Task is gonna become, this is all the time that comes. Right? So the thought process may become that if you provide an environment, because this particular region in the United States is a tracker place to live, so if you provide an environment for folks to live, hopefully, you know, raise families and ultimately stay here, probably more in a single family home, then, you know, essentially, I think we've accomplished what, uh, what we set out to do. And we do have, um, you know, we do have some momentum. I did wanna just point out, because I think it's so important for residents out here this evening, you know, you know, listening. I, like, you know, I had a conversation too, prior to my conversation with you. And, uh, you know, it's just important for them to stay engaged, you know? And these are a lot of people that live there. And I understand sometimes, you know, when you hear, like, they stage development, you know, folks get a little kind of jingy about it. You know, the thought in my mind is, how do you protect the existing neighborhood? Which is a completely different conversation than what we're talking about now. But my point is, when we view development like we are tonight, reviewing it in a zone, district, however you'd like to refer, that that has been set to accommodate development, ultimately create, attempt to experience for the city of residents here and residents forthcoming. You know, I shared this with you at the break. I went back and revisited URDP 4, which essentially gets a new financial plan that's to, amongst the others, how will we pay for this? And part of it is to sell one. They look at, right? We have to dispose of the Ross garage in the Hyde Park lot. And they essentially put a value in that document of $9.8 million. So if we're considering disposing of roughly a quarter acre, that's, uh... Essentially, we're talking about square foot license, you see it? Right? For $1.9 million, that gives us a gap. They hit that target of $9.8 million, right? We have three parks. We have R1, which we're talking about tonight. We have R2 and R3. You have to determine. So we have to make up essentially seven and a half to eight million dollars. Do you feel, and no one's a predictor of the economy, right? Do you feel that we're gonna have a pipeline momentum to hit that bogey that would essentially finance us?
Yes, I do. And I, and I think that $9.8 million on that side of Quincy Center, it's a, it's an estimate. You know, I would point out that absolutely all future development on that site is going to be subject to land disposition by this council. They'll be able to determine, as you have with this current project, what the value of the process is. And it'll be supported because all future parcels will also have to have an independent appraisal as the foster appraisal gave us for that, uh, that site. Important to note that, you know, right now, that's R1. We talked about R2 and R3. There's flexibility. There could be two smaller units instead. There could be four, four sites. But I, I think what we're trending towards is the three sites on that side. And I took an opportunity to also speak, uh, a little earlier to the representative from R2, Jane, and I said, "Do you still feel comfortable with that?" And he said, "Yes." He said, "That lines up with what we have." So it's, but there are a number of factors, and I wanna be very clear. Land disposition. Many of you are very familiar with what's going on with LDC. There may be some exchanges of land. Uh, we can take some of their land, and they can take some of ours. So every factor of land disposition before this council moves forward, and every piece of land that we dispose will be independently appraised. So we use 9.8 as a projected number. I think we're still comfortable with that number. You know, obviously, less the proceeds of the current project. And so I, I think that, you know, we're above two here, so we're at 7.8 between the two other projects. I think that's in...
So you kind of, it's a great transition into my next question. I would invite this to some more, and I'd love to join you at the podium if you'd be so kind. Correct. Thank you for your, uh...
Mr. Seymour, please.
Your, uh... Thank you for your back end work, you know, on the follow-up from last council meeting. You know, Councilor, hopefully, you got that email that showed what the current snapshot of the DIF was. You know, Mr. Seymour at the time was confident that we had sufficient revenue coming in to essentially cover our expenses, and he's illustrated that through that handout that I started with everyone. One thing that I was kind of wondering, Jim, and the only reason I had asked you to stay up there is 'cause I thank you for the interim CMO of the White, right? One of our cap in this, uh, in this administration. When you showed, when you showcased to us that essentially we were net positive assuming around over, call it $1.7 million, right, the Black, Black 17, let's say $1.7 million above and beyond what we needed to pay our bills for the current bonds iteration downtown, what we're up against. Right. Well, I understand, Jim, and this is the part I don't know. I don't see Mark here, otherwise I would ask him. But, um, any surplus revenue that comes from the DIF district essentially circumvents itself into the general fund. Correct?
Yeah, that, 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 uh, that is what has happened for many years. As you know, the monies front of the DIF district have already been going into the general fund for many years. And at one point, the council wanted a definitive change in accounting, which was done, where the all DIF revenues go into a separate DIF account that can be identified clearly. But that money, as, as we go forward, there will be monies that will be, of course, assigned, if you will, to pay down debt when we go from bands to bonds.
So would that mind any surplus revenue that's in the subaccount that exists inside of the general fund and like my own tracksalot, right? Any surplus revenue from the DIF district that finds itself in the general account?
It could, if there was a, if there was a need to transfer those monies.
So my question is, it kind of alludes to what Councilman Yang was saying. We know that essentially we're going to have to service debt down continuously downtown, right?
On the off, yes.
Roughly of where we're going in terms of dollar spend for parking garage?
Yes.
But we also know that in order to service that part of the debt, that the way I see the deal being put together is we're going to have these anchor tenants who are essentially going to sublease a lot of these spaces from that garage. Basically, make sure we're covering our fats on that garage?
Yes.
Would it not make sense to kind of escrow that surplus that we have now, $1.7 million, into a separate account within the DIF? Just in terms of a, uh... In case we didn't hit our numbers?
So, so the monies that go into the DIF account right now, which you're suggesting is that they be bifurcated into a subaccount within the DIF account itself?
In the event of a shortfall? I don't know. I don't know the answer. It's something that came along.
By the way, under the legislation, the way it's set up, the regulation is that the DIF incremental revenue can be used for debt service or for administrative costs. But it's really that the, the, the council has to what to do. We wanna pay those excesses of DIF funds and put it into a kitty to, for future expenses in the DIF district and for the downtown. That's your prerogative to do that.
Because otherwise, it comes back to the general fund, and it gets certified as free cash, right? And it becomes part of the free cash that we have.
When it comes out of the DIF account, if it's not spent for debt service or administrative expenses or earmarked by the council, then it can't flow back out into the general fund.
Or could it not be used as a risk mitigation tool inside of the DIF account? Would that, I mean, would that be sizable? I, I don't know.
Yes, it's often what we recommend, and financial advisors recommend to cities who are setting up DIF programs, is that to take some of those excesses...